I'd like to call the Pipestone City Council meeting for September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order, please. Could I get a roll call?
Mayor Delaney?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Swanson?
Here.
And Councilmember Colbeck?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If you're able, please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next up is approval of the agenda. Is there any additions, changes, or deletions to the agenda from any of the council members? I have one addition that I would like to put on, and this would be under new business, item I, and that would be to hold a special meeting on Thursday, September nineteenth at five thirty of the Pipestone City Council to discuss the two thousand and twenty-five proposed budget. Is there any other additions, changes, or deletions? If there is none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Thank you. The consent agenda is up. The consent agenda contains the following items for approval: the September third, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting minutes, the September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four special meeting minutes, the payment of claims listed in the bills, and the August financial reports. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
I move we accept that consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Thank you. Next up is community concerns, and Deb, do we have anyone sign in for community concerns, or did we get any written or electronic correspondence?
We have none.
Okay, all right. With no community concerns, then, we have a presentation, and this is our utility rate study, and Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers Public Financial Advisors will give us a presentation on that at this time. So, thank you, Rebecca. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers. And as you are aware, over the last several months, we've been working with staff and the utility committee to move forward with completing a utility rate study to review where you're at with your current rates and where you should be moving forward as you look at not only the debt you have, but projects that are coming. So I'm gonna start here with the first slide being why did the city even undertake a rate study? And there really are two reasons why we worked with Deb to move forward with this at this time. Mainly, it falls under the category to ensure that financial stability for your sewer utility. As you know, we looked at storm a while ago, and it's anticipated that we will be looking at water when we are done with the sewer. A big part of that is that historically, the sewer fund has been operating in the red, and so this is helping get a plan where it can be as an enterprise fund would be and operating in the black as kind of a standalone business entity of the city. In addition, with that financial sustainability, it's not only making sure you have adequate cash reserves, but as you know, there is a fair amount of debt related with your sewer that we want to make sure we have sufficient funds to pay that. And then also looking forward for funding long-range capital projects and having a plan in place on how those projects will be funded. The second part of why we undertook a rate study is to look at equity across the user classes. And so as part of this, we looked at the rate structure and again, looked at how much each user class is paying to make sure that, for example, residential isn't subsidizing commercial. And so to come forward with a proposal where the user classes are paying their fair share with a minimal subsidy from other user classes. So as we look at where you are at with your utility or with your sewer utility, as I'm sure all of you know, the cash was depleted. There is over eight hundred thousand in annual debt service, or there is in the next five years. Most of that is connected with street and utility projects that have been done. There also is some PFA debt, which I'll talk about in a little bit, but that will be rolling off in a few years. In addition, there is a deficit of about one point seven five million. As we've worked through this process, you will know that that is a higher number than what some of you may have heard me talk about in the past. When we had the final audit completed, we did update that number, and that is mainly to the capital equipment fund. With the overview on the utilities for sewer, we also then recognize that there is the Northeast Street Improvement Project that is currently under construction, and we are looking for forward to Phase Three, which likely would be in twenty-five or twenty-six. We have incorporated that into the analysis. I do want to note that the CIP for sewer after twenty-six is pretty skinny. And so we don't have projects for sure in there or placeholders in that. I just want to note is something that we believe it would be beneficial from just your long-term planning, that when you start to look out five, I mean, even ten years, even though we know a ten years changes, to get those in there, it helps with the planning and longer range of where rates should be. So with this, we did complete a cost of service rate study. One of the reasons that we did a cost of service that is a little different twist on the rate study is that it really looks at allocating the costs of the system to the different user classes, I mentioned, between the residential and the commercial. And we look at cost of service studies many times when a community has a really high utility user, in this case, JBS. So with the cost of service study, as I mentioned, it looks at fairly allocating that cost of the system, and it's those costs are spread over two components. One is the base charge, and that pays for those fixed costs that you're going to have regardless of how much water anybody uses. So it's, you know, operations, it's the pipes in the ground, those things that aren't, those costs that aren't going to change based on flow. And then the second part of the analysis does look at the volumetric user charge. So really, the more water you use, the more you're gonna pay with that. And we looked at that with the rate of a hundred gallons of domestic strength flow. Just a breakdown of those sewer costs. The fixed cost is about six hundred and thirty-two thousand, and you can see how that breaks out with operating on your twenty-four budget, the depreciation, and then the capital and debt. Again, capital and debt being a fairly significant part of that overall budgeted needs there. So I did mention fixed costs, and I'll pause for a minute. As I go through this, if you have questions, and please stop me. I'm not, I don't care if I need to wait till the end, or if you want to interrupt me, please feel free to do so. So as we talk about fixed costs, things that fall in the fixed cost category include, you know, staffing for, or staffing or staff allocation for running the sewer utility, a portion of those fixed assets. So again, the equipment and depreciation that is connected, supplies, insurance, the cost of send-out bills, all of those things are included in the base charge because, as I mentioned, those costs are going to be there regardless of how much water you use. Those are going to be fixed and need to have revenues to make sure that those can be covered. So as we looked at the rate study, four of our main observations, again, were recognizing that the sewer fund does need those additional large increases because it is operating in the red. We do recognize that there already was a large increase of seventeen percent for looking in two thousand and twenty-four. We also identified that the base charge was low. So again, I mentioned on different user classes subsidizing. In this case, those high-volume users were subsidizing the low-volume users. The large industrial user was not paying for their entire sewer flow. Again, I think we know, we didn't call it out in the presentation, but JBS, and I will talk a little more about them specifically because we do recognize that they are really impacted fairly significantly with this analysis. So under the current contract that is in place between the city and JBS, JBS is only obligated to pay for their non-production water use for sewer billing purposes. So that means that other customers were subsidizing some of the costs that if you look at the cost of service study and equally are fairly allocating costs across customers, JBS was not, under the current contract, paying their proportionate share. And then we also just wanted to note that as you move forward and think about changes and amendments to the city ordinance, something that we may want to consider is refining that to include a domestic strength definition of phosphorus. And again, that is something that's not in your current ordinance, but that is something we are seeing start to come up with more and more communities and MPCA findings. And so that might be something that we want to eventually get ahead of and address as part of the discussions at some point when you move forward.
Is that something, Deb, that Jason's aware of?
We've been having, starting discussions with Jason on this because we are codifying the code book.
Correct. So I thought that would be a good point to make sure he understands.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
So with our analysis and our initial recommendation, you can see the proposed sewer rate changes. And I absolutely recognize there's some big, big increases here. What we are proposing, you can see the twenty-four, so for base fee for all users, the base fee for this year is seventeen dollars and fifty-five cents, and then usage at a dollar eleven per hundred gallons. We are, or we, our initial recommendation is looking at a twenty-six and a half percent increase in that fixed rate or base fee for twenty-five and twenty-six, and a ten and a half percent increase in the usage for twenty-five and twenty-six. And then moving forward, starting in twenty-seven, we are projecting closer to a two percent increase. So under our initial recommendation, we do recognize it is a kind of rip the Band-Aid off approach. With this scenario and with the information that we have today with projected projects, this would get the city operating in the black with the sewer fund looking in two thousand and twenty-seven. Now, with that approach, again, here is an example of sample monthly bills. I'm looking at a residential property that would use about three hundred, or three thousand gallons a month. The commercial property, and then because, again, recognizing that JBS is a very large industrial user, we did call them out specifically. This scenario, again, under the cost of service model where costs are allocated equally or fairly across the user rates, does assume that JBS will pay a hundred percent of its water usage with the sewer billing. And so again, that does change from what their historical agreement has been with the city. So when we brought this forward initially, we did recognize this is a big impact or big change to JBS. And so Deb and some of your city team and some of my team did have a meeting with them to walk through and just start that discussion so that they were not caught off guard. After a while, then, they did come back with a proposal, and JBS is proposing a phased approach to get them to paying their full share, and they are proposing that that phased-in approach happen over a three-year term. And so again, currently, they are only obligated to pay for their non-production water use for the sewer billing purposes. And with that, we are recommending, under the proposal, whether you do a phased approach or the rip the Band-Aid off approach, that that SIU agreement will need to be amended to bill for all of the water usage flowing through their discharge system. What JBS has requested of the city is that three-year phased-in approach with breaking it into them paying for the way they currently are paying plus an additional thirty thousand per year in twenty-five and twenty-six, and then full charges are applied in January of twenty-seven. So that means for two thousand and twenty-five, they would pay per the agreement plus thirty thousand. In twenty-six, it would be per the current agreement plus sixty thousand, and then it would be fully implemented per our initial recommendation, starting in two thousand and twenty-seven. With that, when you look at their bill, then, you can see how, and again, specifically, this would relate to JBS. We are not recommending changing what we brought forward for the other commercial users or residential. But for JBS, you can see how that phased-in approach, per their recommendation, could be implemented.
Okay, okay. So we have, just to be clear, JBS is an industrial user?
Yes.
Not a commercial user?
Um.
Or?
It falls under the commercial-industrial category, and while they are an industrial user, they would be billed like the commercial-industrial category. I'm pulling them out specifically just because for most of your commercial or the other companies and businesses in that category, it is not as significant of an impact as it is with JBS. But their billing system or the billing structure would be the same as the other commercial. It just is significantly higher per the agreement that is in place. So it's a more dramatic change.
So we have residential billing and we have commercial billing, and that's it? We don't have residential, commercial, industrial?
Correct.
Okay.
With our, with our.
Am I saying that right, Deb? Is there three tiers or just the two tiers?
It was.
Probably with the exception of the SIU agreement.
Yeah. Yes, that's maybe what adds a little complication. Is there, there are two tiers, but there is an SIU agreement with JBS. And so that puts them in kind of a category of their own because they do have that special agreement for their usage.
Okay, gotcha.
For the nature of their business. Yes, because of their business and the situation. So again, looking at the monthly bill, you can see how that thirty thousand that they are proposing for twenty-five is broken up. So an additional two thousand five hundred per month in twenty-five, that doubles then in twenty-six to get to the amount per our recommendation with the cost of service study in two thousand and twenty-seven. With their proposal, whether you look at what we initially brought forward as our recommendation or the proposal from JBS, ultimately, it gets to the same place. It gets in, starting in twenty-seven, the utility fund in the direction, moving in the direction to operate in the black. I have a chart, and it's a couple slides here, so I'll pause, I guess, before, but it gets ultimately to the same place. It just takes a little bit longer and, again, gives some time for JBS to phase in versus that immediate increase for two thousand and twenty-five for them, gives them a little time to plan. With that, we do know that communities like to see how they compare to other communities. We, this always makes us a little bit nervous, even though we always get this question, because we recognize that it is something that is important for you to understand. But I will note with our community comparison that every community is unique, and every community is in, you know, different points. So we have communities that maybe just did a brand-new significant sewer project and have high debt and just issued debt last year, and so they've already gone through this process, and their rates are higher, and we have communities that are like, oh, we're not there yet, and maybe behind on getting their infrastructure updated, and their rates are still lower. So there are a lot of factors that play in, and I'm going to show you the slide next of how you compare with other communities, but just note that there are a lot of factors and different circumstances that pay into this. With this, you can see Pipestone currently in the first bar, our proposal for twenty-five and twenty-six in the second bar, and all of these are broken out with the base and the volumetric charge. We did use Laverne, Granite Falls, Wyndham, Cannon Falls, and St. James. I will say that, you know, when you look at Cannon Falls, per my comment I just made, they had done significant improvement several years ago and had been levying for years at, or having rates set for years at a very high rate to pay off debt. That debt has finally been paid off, and so they were able to drop some of that, and you can see that with the sewer volume charge. So again, it really depends on the, where communities are at as far as where rates are. And then, again, the same chart, only looking at the commercial or commercial-industrial with this. And again, that base fee, but with commercial, many times, these are higher water or utility users, and so you see those volume charger, charges being higher in the commercial side. As I mentioned, with both proposals, whether it is the initial recommendation that we brought forward or the phased-in approach from JBS's proposal, you can see that we start to get to that point of operating in the black or having that cash balance, moving from being in a deficit to at least positive in two thousand and thirty-one, and then looking at about break even with our target in two thousand and thirty-three, and then having that surplus, at least shown on the graph, in two thousand and twenty, or two thousand and thirty-four. What I do want to note on that is that there are not any projects in your CIP for two thousand and thirty-four. So while we suddenly are looking at, you know, big surpluses at that point in time, that is not factoring in projects, and I would guess by then, there will be some projects. So I think that number is probably overstated and can be refined as you get, continue to work on your capital improvement plan. With that, our target, how we identify what that target is for the previous slide, is looking at fifty percent of your operation and maintenance. Can you go back one slide, please? Sure hope so. If not, I'll talk through it. That target, or kind of that lighter blue-gray color, represents fifty percent of your operation and maintenance, less your depreciation, plus a hundred percent of next year's debt service. And so that's the math to identify where that target is, and then you can see the actual cash balance that is being projected at that point in time. With the JBS proposal, basically, we delay the positive cash balance out by, we're projecting it would be delayed by one year. So again, gets to the same point, takes one year longer, but ultimately, it gets you to the point of operating in the black with either proposal. So with next steps, I am here for any feedback, recommendations. You know, while we presented our initial recommendation and then also reviewed the counterproposal from JBS, as you know, ultimately, it is your decision, and you can come back with something that is completely different than either one of those two scenarios. If we need to go back and do some revisions, you know, I can take that feedback I received tonight, look at the other scenarios that meet the goals that you as a council have or as policymakers. And then ultimately, in the next few weeks, our goal is to adopt rates for two thousand and twenty-five. As I indicated, the, looking a little longer term beyond just adopting rates for twenty-five, we would recommend starting to think and strengthen the capital improvement plan and talking with, you know, Travis and others on what are those projects that are going to be coming forward, and so we can incorporate those in and continue to look long-term and do some planning with where rates need to be based on those projects. And then also, we recommend that, you know, rate analysis aren't a one-time, set them on the shelf and never look at them again. You know, we made a lot of assumptions here. We believe it is the best information that we have, knowing, best recommendation with the information we have today. But we know water usage changes, new companies come in, people change habits. And so I'm reviewing these on a regular basis every few years. We do believe is a benefit to the community. With that, I just dumped a lot of information on you, so I will pause and happy to accept feedback, answer questions.
Go ahead, Roger.
You stated that JBS was in agreement with what we proposed.
With their proposal.
That's their proposal.
Their proposal. They were not happy with our initial recommendation, and so they came back with the proposal to do it, to phase it in over a three-year period.
But the result would be the same?
It would get us to the same point.
But it'd just take three years to get there?
It just would take a little bit longer to get there.
That's what I thought.
Is it three years or one year? I was thinking it was three years, but did you say one year?
So it would be increasing their charge by thirty thousand dollars over a three-year period. So in twenty-five, it would be their usage or their cost per the agreement plus thirty thousand dollars. In twenty-six, it would be per the agreement plus sixty thousand dollars. And then in twenty-seven, it gets to the point of them paying the full.
Full amount.
Full amount.
Okay. Well, I certainly agree with you that this is something that needs to be looked at much more frequently than it has been. And this is the first time that there has been a study in my, the way I understand it, or not.
It is the first time that I have brought forward for a discussion with the council.
Okay.
I will say we have looked at this in the past, but my interaction was with staff, and I never presented it to the council.
All right, yeah. Well, I certainly agree that it should be, you know, as transparent as possible, and I appreciate your presentation and the information that was given today. And is there any other questions or comments from the council? comments from the council? Okay, yeah. So we have a decision to make later down the road, I think, don't we? As far as what we're going to be doing and with no other questions. Thank you, Rebecca.
And I'll stick around, you know, as you have that discussion, if there are follow-up questions, I'll be here.
Okay, thank you. Engineering and Travis, there is no engineering. So we'll move on to new business, consider approval of the JBS sewer fees. Information on this is provided by Rebecca that we had just heard. Utility rate study and the utility commission members also looked at it and there was a discussion with JBS members and a proposal came forward through JBS. And on how to charge for their full sewer usage fees. And I, and I think what it boils down to is the SIU agreement is going to be adjusted to include all their water usage. That's something that JBS agreed to and that's something the city wants, correct? That was, that was one thing that we agreed on, correct?
That would be at a Jan- in January 1st, but at a later date.
But at a later date, but that was part of this original discussion, that that SIU agreement be updated.
Yes. And we'd have to take it to Jason. Jason have to look through it and then he would have to update it. We'll take it back to JBS.
Okay.
That tonight is just to, if we would agree with, to approve the JBS three-year proposal or Ellers.
Right, but now I, I came in late on that discussion, but was there any discussion on the SIU agreement being proposing that they pay for 100% of their water usage?
Not at that meeting.
There wasn't?
No.
Okay.
That is, has to be further discussed. We were talked about taking it to our attorney.
Okay.
Yep. And then they would look, look at it. Yep. And then they would look at it as well.
Okay. So their discussion, their proposal indicates that they want to move into a tier system over the next three years and pay an additional 30,000 a flat rate versus paying what our proposal was. And that boils down to about what was it, 66,000 less coming in the first year? About 33,000 less coming in the second year. In the third year, we'd be at the full rate that was proposed. And so that would put us back on track as far as getting to where we need to be. Hopefully in the black someday, but who knows about future projects and the unforeseen is always out there too. We could have additional expenses that come up that we're not aware of right now. So that's the discussion that's up for debate and I'll open it up to the council to see how we want to proceed.
We would bill, if I just make it clear for the council, right now they're billed their sewer from the plant itself. And so we would, we bill them, I believe it's 4908 through the SIU agreement, we invoice that monthly. So we would be invoicing the $2,500 a month beginning January 1st of January of 2025. And we would bill that $2,500 a month for the sewer, the domestic strength that comes from the pretreatment facility. And then of course, and that would double to $5,000 a month in 2026. And then in 2027, hit the, hit the mark. And get to where we're supposed to be.
And if you see where they're at right now, it's about $550 a month that was coming in.
Almost 600, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So it's going to be a significant increase. Either way, it's just delayed with their proposal.
And this just helps them with their budgeting too. It's, it's unbudgeted. It'd be a $90,000 hit.
Yeah, well, I agree with that. I, you know, it's a pretty big change for them. Real quick, like, and you got to remember, JBS is really good for City of Pipestone too that I think, I guess I'm in agreement. I'll make a motion to, to approve their, their rate structures that they, they submitted.
I'll second it.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the JBS sewer fees proposal with a tiered system that over the three-year plan, it, it's still our system, our recommendation from our financial advisors, it's just delaying it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad that, that in looking at this, that JBS was involved the whole time to work on this.
Yeah. And, and I would have to agree with Roger also. JBS is a very important employer in our community. And ripping the band- off, Band-Aid off approach is a, is a good way to do things, but it may not always fit with major employers like this. And, you know, when you're looking at a bill that was $560 or whatever, $600 and now suddenly it's $8,000 a month, that is a huge change. However, there are fixed costs and those fixed costs have to be covered no matter what. And they were being passed on to other water users or other sewer users, I should say. So to get things straightened out and to use the full amount of through the SIU, I think that's got to be a crucial part of this discussion that that is updated also. As our recommendations are through our financial advisor, that they are billed for 100% of that usage. And with that, I would be in agreement to delay it. It does change our propose, proposal for operating in the black. And it would delay it three years? Is it, or is it just the one year?
One year.
It, it would actually delay it one year. Okay, all right. So we'd be talking about 2030, 31. And of course, a lot can happen between now and then, but I think we're on the right path, so. Okay, any other discussion? Comments, concerns? A motion's on the floor to approve JBS's proposal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Thank you. A request for council action, the Pipestone Area Elementary Boosters is requesting the use of the Westview Park along with the use of concession stand and bathrooms, 10 extra picnic tables and four extra garbage totes. In addition to that, is it what is already there for their annual back-to-school bash on Wednesday, September 25th? And I'd entertain a motion to approve that request.
So move.
Second.
I, I know that was a very popular back-to-school bash. Last year, there was a lot of families that attended that and it's a great idea just to get the community together and to get the school district together, involved and fully support it. So all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Another request for council action, the Pipestone Area Chamber of Commerce is requesting the following for their 10th Annual Trunk or Treat in Downtown Candy Walk on Thursday, October 31st, 2024. It'll be here before we know it. Permission to close the 100 and 200 blocks of West Main Street and the 100 block of East Main Street from 3:00 PM to 6:30 PM. Public Works assistance placing street closing signs, barricades and a few trash cans at the following locations. On West Main Street by Liberty Pond, on East Main Street by First Farmers and Merchant, and on the intersection of Second Avenue, Southwest, Northwest and Hiawatha Avenues, North and South. The trunk or treat event has been approved in the past and I'd recommend a motion to approve this request.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Airport hangar door replacement, we're in need of a hangar door. That door is not safe and we have a company that uses, would like to use that hangar. And we need to update it. They're a very big employer in the community and they do a lot of fly-ins and outs and I just talked to one of their staff members today that was flying out at 8 o'clock and had to attend some meetings and come back to work later on. So I think an airport that we have, we're so fortunate to have the airport we have. And for commerce, it's absolutely vital. And we need to have it maintained and updated. And so the request is for a power lift hydraulic door for the cost of $32,958. And that's a proposal that would replace the hydraulic door that is there now and is not safe for use. And we don't want to see that come down on somebody. We don't want to see it come down on equipment. And this is an unbudgeted item, but there is funds available there, if I'm correct there, Deb.
In the airport fund balance.
In the airport fund balance, they do have funding available to absorb this cost, so.
I'll make a motion to approve that purchase.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Thank you. Discuss renaming a segment of Second Avenue Northeast. And I wanted to bring this up as a discussion item only at this time to the council. Second Avenue Northeast is actually what used to be County Road 60, I believe.
67.
67, I'm sorry. And that is the blacktop that angles to the east off Hiawatha. And it was a county road right up until 2016. And my understanding was that it hadn't been named. But Joel was thinking that it was second because that was what the address they were using. But I, I've heard it both ways. So I don't know if it's been named since the county turned it over to the city or not.
It was a, it was a county state aid road and then it was turned over to the city. And I think it was named Second Avenue Northeast when the water plant went in.
Right, but was that actually an ordinance that was passed? Or was, was it just put on there as their address? Because that's where we're, we're missing some information somewhere along the line, whether it was actually named or not.
So I'm not, I'd have to look at that and let me look at that because usually when a, a when they name a, a street or they get an address, the street is already there.
Yeah.
What was it, Scott? Cause we acquired that from, wasn't that a?
Was that something?
Well, they traded North Hiawatha for that.
Right, but there, that, there was a farm there. That's how we acquired that, put the water plant in there.
The Bee Farm was there.
The Bee Farm.
Farm was there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what was that?
So we'd have to look back at what their address was.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that address when we acquired that property.
And, and probably that old Bee Farm that was there, that was long before 911 addressing and everything else. And maybe that's where it came from, just because that was a common use. But anyway, getting past all that, what I wanted to bring up was I, I'd like to see that area change, that name. And my proposal is to change just that area to Totman Drive. And I think our packet said Totman Avenue, but I'd like to see Totman Drive because it is just a short area. And I'd like to recognize all four of the brothers that were in the military during World War II. And there actually is one of them still surviving. And then I'd also wanted to recognize Harold Totman in particular. Because Harold spent just over 50 years volunteering services with the Sheriff's Department here in the City of Pipestone. And he started that in 1958 and retired in the early 2000s on that. And he did a lot more than just that for our community. He was involved with the food shelf for many, many years. He was involved with Kiwanis for many, many years. Have you ever heard of Christmas care? And Kiwanis is still continuing that. Harold was one of the founding members to get that going. And that provides a Christmas meal and toys for people that normally wouldn't have funds available for that. So that's why I wanted to discuss it further and see if we can, if there's any agreement from the council. I know there's also been issues with Joel getting his mail and stuff because of that Second Avenue Northeast. They're not recognizing that, that it always ends up at the fort.
Right.
And, and so I'm just wondering whether that was ever officially named or not. And we just need to get through that process and we have to do it through an ordinance. So I, I think it is a good idea for staff to research this further. Put together an ordinance and we'll go through the process. We'll have the hearing and we'll get it introduced and go from there. And we'll see, and then the council can make a decision at that time. So. All right. Well, thank you. And yeah, so I understand.
Good luck.
Thank you, Verdine.
We expect to email tomorrow.
Okay.
With the results.
All right. Okay, let's move on then to Resolution 2024-51. This is a resolution granting a variance to install the second sign at our public library here at 220 Third Avenue Southeast. And, and actually it's lettering on the building. And according to our ordinances, we can't have more than just one. We got to have just one sign. So this was a variance that came before the Board of Appeals and Adjustment. And they are recommending that we approve it. It's a lettering that's attached to the building. And the, the way that building is set up, it's on a corner. And so it makes sense to show from both sides the side facing the east and the side facing the south, that it is a public library now. So I'd recommend a motion to approve this variance.
I'll make that motion. If we approve that variance for installing the second sign at the new library.
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve variance. The Resolution 2024-51 for that variance. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Thank you. Resolution 2024-52, this is a resolution denying a variance, construct a garage in excess of the allowed square footage at 307 Sixth Street Southwest. A public hearing was held on August 27th by the Board of Appeals and Adjustments. And they recommended denying that. And so we have a Resolution 2024-52 to deny the variance. And part of that discussion was, those are townhomes. And that building was closer to the neighbor's townhome than it was to the proposed owner's townhome. Certainly within the setbacks. However, it would have been like five feet from the neighbor's townhome. And I, I think if it was a single-family dwelling, maybe you could make something like that work, but squeezing the building that size into townhomes like that is just pushing the limit, I think. And we did receive a letter from concerned neighbor that it would be too close and block of view and things like that. So this certainly doesn't stop him from putting together a proposal and putting a building in there that meets the requirements in size. But the square footage he has now is adequate. He has a double garage there. And this would put in another driveway. And I'm not sure that wouldn't be a violation of an ordinance to having more than one driveway. And a lot like that too, I don't know. But anyway, the Board of Appeals and Adjustments recommend denying the variance. So I'd entertain a motion to that at 24-52.
I'll move Resolution 2024-52.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Thank you. Resolution 2024-53, this is a resolution granting a variance to construct a truck wash and additional farm buildings within a 300-foot setback on property located near the intersection of 121st Street and County Road 67. Within a three hundred-foot setback on property located near the intersection of one hundred and twenty-first Street and County Road sixty-seven. A public hearing was held on August twentieth by the Board of Appeals. And the adjustments, and they are recommending that the console approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-three. Grant the variance requested. And I have a letter.
Before you read that letter, Dan. The public hearing was held August twentieth.
Correct.
So why is there comments coming in now after the public hearing? And I don't, and I I guess I disagree with reading the letter.
I did let Ms. Blasek, Ms. Blasek know that um her time for comments was during the public hearing. And that um she didn't personally, the monument didn't personally get the notification because they were not within three hundred fifty-foot radius. Of the property. And um that it was in the paper on our website and on cable access. And um I told her she could give us her comments, and then I would distribute them.
Well, I I haven't had time to read the letter because I just got it right before the meeting started, so.
I just got them this afternoon.
I don't know. I guess, you know, if it wants to be done at a later time, but I'm. I mean, the board of. The hearing is over with. I mean, isn't going to do any good. I mean, I suppose it could persuade the council members one way or another to disprove it, but. I mean, the recommendation from.
Yeah, well, um. We have a Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-three. And uh. There was a public hearing held on August twentieth, like I had said. And the Board of Appeals and Adjustments is recommending approval of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-three. So I'd entertain a motion for that at this point.
I'll make a motion to accept the Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-three.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, comments? And so at this time, I will read the uh. Um email that we received from Lauren Blasek, and she is the Superintendent of the Pipestone National Monument. And just as a good neighbor to a national monument. Um I'll follow through with this. Attached, please find my comment letter to the city council. Regarding the proposed variance for a truck wash. I am sorry that I cannot be there in person, but I appreciate this letter. Will be provided to the council for consideration and read into the record. Would you please confirm receipt of my email and let me know if any additional information is needed? And Deb did respond to her email. And we did receive this letter. And and so I will honor her request and read it into the record. Uh this is dated September fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And it's to the Pipestone City Council. Uh dear council members, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the hold. Farms West variance request to construct a truck wash. Without the required setback within the C one Conservation District. I have concerns about the potential for this variance to negatively impact the scenic quality of the Pipestone National Monument. Pipestone National Monument is the first National Park Service unit established in Minnesota. This place still exists because local leaders like Wilford Bartlett. Had the foresight to advocate for this protection. Today, the monument welcomes over eighty thousand visitors a year and contributes. Seven point four million dollars to the local economy. That said, the monument itself is only three hundred acres. Its scenic quality depends on the advocacy and vision of the community to provide as much protection as possible for the national treasure. Below, I have outlined potential areas of concerns, questions, and recommendations. As this council considers the degrees to which protection for the national monument will be prioritized. Uh water quality. What percentage of the wash water from this facility will be captured in the sanitary sewer? Do engineering studies support the plan for water catchment? And and we can answer those questions as we go on, I think, later. Um in the area surrounding the facility, how will dirty water from the parking lot and trucks be diverted from the creek? What are the mitigation, emergency response, and cleanup plans in the event that flooding backs up the sanitary sewer? And contaminants spill into agricultural land, wetlands, the creek, and the national monument? And I think those are all questions that our engineer can respond back to. Because they have been discussed and and thought about. As you know, water quality in the Pipestone Creek is poor. A twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen U S G S study found that contaminations within the water. At the monument include E. coli, pharmaceuticals, and pathogens. The creek holds special significance as its water has sustained people coming to the quarry for three thousand years. Sadly, visitors today are strongly advised against entering the creek. And the National Park Service has had to post signs warning of public health risks. I understand, and this is Lauren. That the intention of the facility would be to drain water into the sanitary sewer. But more impermanently surfaces this close to the creek will likely lead to further degradation of water quality. Stormwater runs off pavement and into neighboring agricultural lands, wetlands, and streams. In this case, that runoff could include motor oil, solvents, other chemicals, and animal waste. The storm sewer backing up is a problem during flooding. The spread of contaminants contaminated water from the facility into the monument. Would raise serious environmental and legal concerns. I believe it is possible to have clean water here again with concerned collaborating effort and. Have seen all levels of government working together to try to move that trend in a more positive direction. This variance request is another opportunity to prioritize clean water. Traffic on North Hiawatha. Will trucks be allowed to access the truck wash from North Hiawatha? North Hiawatha is a primary corridor for visitors to the monument. Trucks included already impact the negative, the natural quiet within the monument and. Any increase in the heavy equipment traffic would cause a negative impact to visitors' experiences. Noise. How loud will the truck wash facility itself be? What is the city's plan for preventing increased noise pollution in this corridor? Which includes the monument circle trail and the city's walking trail. Pipestone National Monument is a sensitive area, and the National Park Service has a responsibility. Protect the acoustic environment per the N P S Organic Act thirty-six C. F R. Section two point one-two and agency's policies. We have previously conducted an acoustic inventory of the park. And natural ambient sound levels were measured between thirty-six point three A B A daylight. And thirty-four point six A B A nighttime. Estimates of the anticipated noise from the proposed truck wash. Would help us provide the city, would help provide the city council. With models of impact at various points within the monument. While the proposed truck wash is one half mile from. Parts of the national monument border, it is even closer to the former campus of the Pipestone Indian School. And the boarding school superintendent's house. Which are. Uh the superintendent house is standing, but the boarding school is no longer standing, no longer there. And that superintendent's house is uh unoccupied. I think everybody on the council is familiar with that. Okay. Lighting. Will the facility be operational or lit at night? Many people come to the monument to enjoy dark night skies and star parties are some of our most popular annual interpretive programs. The natural darkness is a key element of the sacred landscape. And I don't see that affecting the the lighting there at all. If if there's lights on at the building, it's. Not going to be interfering with the night sky at the monument a half a mile away, but. Uh that is a concern and. Summary, for the reasons and the response or the resources described above, the National Park Service believes. That a truck wash in such close proximity to the Pipestone National Monument could have a negative impact on the character of the park. I hope that the city council decides. Pipestone National Monument is a valuable resource to this community worthy of the highest level of protection. If a truck wash is permitted despite its potential to negatively impact the monument, the following mitigations are recommended to reduce the impact. Require all water from the entire facility to include all paved surfaces and trucks. Be captured in the sanitary sewer. Ensure that adequate engineering studies are conducted to support proper water drainage. Require a fifty-foot buffer of native very vague vegetation around the facility. To help control stormwater runoff. This vegetation will help slow down contaminants and inevitably runoff pavement. That inevitably runoff pavement. Develop an emergency response and cleanup plan for the potential backup of the sanitary sewer and release of contaminants from the facility. And and I think we would have that in place. I'm sure Joel would just add that facility to the plan he already has in place. Set a specific limit on the allowable exterior decibels and put a monitoring process in place. That would be difficult to do. But I I understand where she's coming from. Clarify and post weight limits on North Hiawatha. Requires the access to the truck wash is from, or require that the access to the truck wash is from Highway seventy-five only. And I I think their plan was for that proposed area was that they wanted Highway seventy-five access. And that is their proposed route. Um I don't see the trucks coming through the city of Pipestone. Um intentionally, just to go on North Hiawatha, go to that route. It's a much shorter trip on Highway seventy-five. And I would assume that's where most of it is going to come from, is seventy-five at this point.
And I think the highways are the road is already posted.
And and you're absolutely correct there.
Washing the trucks are probably going to be empty, so there's no.
And they are empty. And it is a county state aid road.
Right. But it would have postings, and and that's something the county does as far as weight limits. If some amount of exterior lighting is deemed necessary, allow only fully shielded fixtures that prevent light from escaping upward. And utilize warmer color temperatures. E. G. Twenty-seven hundred K. Utilize lights for that have dimmers and timers to reduce times that the lights are on without a purpose. And and you know, that's not a bad idea, too, and that's a cost saving for the uh owner that we could present. Um because why have lights on if there's no one there using it? You know, but I don't know what the plan is, if it's going to be used twenty-four seven or not, so.
And it's not a, it's not a public.
And and it's not a public wash. This is for their private uh equipment to maintain that. So again, and she would like to thank you for your consideration of the Pipestone National Monument, and please let me know if I can. Offer any further information, and that sincerely signed Lauren Blasek, um Superintendent. I apologize for the lengthy presentation, but I think it was important to put that in. Uh at her request, so. Uh with that said, is there any other comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Thank you. Uh item I was added to the agenda. And that's a proposal for a special meeting to be held September nineteenth. At five thirty P M here in the city council chambers. And that would be to discuss the twenty twenty-five budget. I'd entertain a motion to approve that special meeting at this time. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say no. And motion carries. Uh is there any closing comments?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have. Um Mike Blumenthal, uh Public Works Director, wanted me to let everyone know that the citywide fall drop-off. Uh emphasis on drop-off. Monday, October seventh to Thursday, October twentieth from seven A M to seven P M. Please do not put anything curbside. It is a fall drop-off. And then the final mowing is going to be earlier this year. It's going to be be on Friday, October seventh, fourth, sorry, excuse me. Friday, October fourth. It's earlier this year because there's been such an issue with the drought with the weeds out at the cemetery. And then we're going to be spraying on Monday, October seventh. And we want to get ahead of the spraying. They want to spray the weeds. So it can be done before they go dormant because the the spraying of the weeds is more effective if you can get them before they go dormant. So final spraying Friday, October fourth, and we've asked um if people can just. Take care of their flowers and miscellaneous items, please remove them prior to Friday, October fourth.
All right, thank you. And and also just to comment on that, because I did have a uh. A concerned citizen contact me about the artificial flowers. That have been left out all summer, and technically, they shouldn't be left out. They should be removed in ten days after their place there at uh Memorial Day. But um we've got some leniency on that. And and it makes sense. Artificial flowers thirty years ago were plastic and fell apart and were a mess within just a few weeks. But some of the flowers that are out there that are artificial are very nice and very well kept. Um Mike will remove them if they're falling apart and creating an issue. But if they are looking nice, he has allowed them to continue through the summer. And and I think that's reasonable. Yeah, but we want to go ahead and make sure that those artificial flowers are removed now before this final mowing, too, so. If you haven't done that, it'd be a good idea to do it. Okay, any other uh? Comments, closing? Hearing none. I'd entertain a motion for adjournment. All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Travis and Jason, thank you for joining us.